December 22nd Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. I'd like to start out and have everybody rise to do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic where this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I believe we have a quorum here this evening. We don't have our usual Bridget.
No, Madam Chair, it's Jamie, I'm your recording secretary.
Okay.
For tonight. Can I take the roll, please?
You sure can.
Thanks. Mr. Bronco?
Here.
Mr. Cohen? Ms. Furtig? Mr. Gannon? Ms. McCartney?
Here.
Mr. Rotella? Mr. Schenckman?
Present.
Mr. Waymoth?
Here.
And Chair Scott?
Present.
You have a quorum. And could I ask city staff who are in chambers to please identify themselves for the record?
Tonight from staff, we have Ella Parker, Urban Design and Planning Manager; Dewane Spence, Assistant City Attorney; Shari Wallin, Assistant City Attorney; Tyler LaForme, Tricia, excuse me, not Tricia, Christian Cervantes, Nick Collardgeros, and Yvonne Redding. And then Tricia is joining us online. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to begin with, have all the board members reviewed the minutes and is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes.
Madam Chair, could you please repeat who makes the second motions, please, for the record?
Sherry McCartney, I think, made the motion. And the second was Michael Waymoth.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Any members from the public that are here to speak on any agenda items tonight, we would like you to stand and be sworn in.
Okay, do you swear affirm that any testimony you may give during this public hearing will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
Sorry. I'd like to begin the meeting, I'd like to go to Agenda Item Number Five that has requested a deferral. Is there a motion to approve the deferral?
So move.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Mike.
Okay. It's been moved by Michael Waymoth and seconded by Jay Schickman to defer the item number five. Do we need to do roll call or can we do it just in the affirmative voting?
You can just do a voice.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passed. Thank you very much. Okay, let's begin tonight with case number UDP dash P21003, the 1100 Hotels LLC. Do we have anyone speaking on this?
Can you do disclosures, please?
Yes, thank you, Shari, for the, okay, let's start with disclosures. Start with Mr. Bronco, please. Jay?
No disclosures. Site visit, Steve Gannon.
Sherry?
No disclosures.
No?
No disclosures.
Site visit. Before we begin, I forgot to.
This is Mary Furtig and I had, I made a site visit.
Sorry, Mary. Before we go any further, I'd like to introduce the board members. I kind of skipped that. In the audience, we have Mr. Bill Rotella, Ms. Sherry McCartney, Mr. Steve Gannon. Far right is Mr. Michael Waymoth, Mr. Jay Schickman, Mr. John Bronco. Okay, can we go ahead and, we can begin the presentation. How much time do you need? Pardon me?
Fifty seconds.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Jerry McGlaughlin.
You need to pull the microphone down so we can hear.
No, it's not on.
Not on.
Good evening, Jerry McGlaughlin with McGlaughlin Engineering. On behalf of the applicant, we are requesting a positive recommendation for the Lucky's Platte. Property is located at 1100 West State Road 84 and is approximately 1.9 acres. The Platte will be restricted to a 172-room hotel. The Platte was reviewed by the Development Review Committee on July 27th and all the comments have been addressed. Like I said, it is a Platte and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Should we open it to the public first, Jay, or you want to ask questions now? Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, go ahead, Jay.
Didn't we review something with respect to the Lucky Hotel project, like, a year or two ago?
Don't test my memory.
I'm just trying to understand. I thought we approved a site plan or something. I'm trying to understand, why are we reviewing a plot tonight? If we, if my memory serves me correctly, and we did approve something else? Or I'm just confusing?
Dewane Spence, Assistant City Attorney. The Platte process is separate and apart from a site plan process. It is a statutorily required process for the subdividing of land. So if there was a site plan approval or some other development approval process, it would have no relation to the actual Platte consideration that you have tonight.
Got it.
Okay, any other questions for the board?
And Jay, it does also say that the applicant is plotting this site in anticipation of a future development, and that's in your backup under the description.
Okay, got it. And do you know if we approved a site plan on this? I mean, do you know?
I don't think he approved the site plan on this. He just purchased the property this year.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a question for the applicant. On the Platte, I noticed your access onto the properties are at the east and west ends of the site.
That's correct. Only on State Road 84, there's no access to the rear road.
And is that something you guys worked with DOT on? Is that why you ended up with those entry points?
That's correct, yes.
And does, do you guys anticipate having a cross-access easement with the adjacent properties?
I don't know. That issue hadn't come up. The county and DOT have both reviewed it and that's what they gave us access for. As for circulation process.
So they never requested that you provide cross-access with the adjacent properties?
They did not.
Would you be opposed at extending those non-vehicular access lines onto the property on those east and west properties?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
On the east and west property line, where you have your entry points, where you share a property line with the adjacent properties, would you extend those into the property, let's say 50 feet, in case there ever is a cross-access with the adjacent property?
I can't speak on behalf of my client, but I don't think that's an issue.
Yeah, I don't think that'd be an issue either. I just find it odd, because usually when I run into these situations with DOT and I have them putting the easements over on the sides like that, it's almost like they're anticipating doing some sort of shared access with the adjacent property.
Well, the reason they didn't do it on this is the site plan, the stacking is back far enough that it's not an issue as far as access to the property and they have circulation, so it doesn't back up.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone, anyone again in the audience that would like to speak on this issue?
Good evening, Chair. This is Tricia Logan. We have one person who signed up to speak on this item virtually. However, that person is not appearing in the attendee list at this time, so I'll refer to Ella to confirm if there's anyone in the audience that has signed up to speak.
If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak, please approach the podium.
That seems a little redundant.
Doesn't appear so, thank you.
Okay, a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You don't need a motion, you can just close it. Just close it.
Thank you, Shari.
Yeah.
All righty. Do we have a motion on this item? Is there any discussion? Any more discussion on this item? If not, do we have a motion to?
Did you all want to hear from staff or no?
I move that we make the staff report part of the records.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
And who was that who made the motion?
Sherry seconded.
Who made the motion?
Jay Schickman made the motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do I hear a, do I hear a motion on this item? To approve, to?
I move that we approve the item as presented.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion was made to approve by Michael Waymoth, seconded by John Bronco. Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Schickman?
Yes.
Mr. Waymoth?
Yes.
And Chair Scott?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, case number two, case number UDP dash V21001, the vacation of the right-of-way on Northeast Fifth Terrace.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board, my name is Andrew Shine with Lockery and Chalkus, here representing-
Did you want to do disclosures?
Disclosures, I'm sorry, Shari. Okay, starting with John, disclosures?
Nothing to disclose.
Jay?
I spoke with the applicant's attorney.
Mike?
Nothing.
Steve?
Site visit and spoke with applicant's attorney.
Shari?
I spoke with the applicant's attorney as well.
No?
Site visit.
And I spoke with the applicant's attorney. Thank you, Shari.
This is Mary Furtig and I visited the site.
Thank you, Mary. Sorry, I keep forgetting you because you're not here. Not intentional. Okay, go ahead, Andrew.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board, Andrew Shine with Lockery and Chalkus, here representing the property owner. This is for the property located at the northwest corner of Sixth Street and Federal Highway. This is a site of a previously vacated street and we're here to continue that street vacation tonight. As you can see in blue, that is the area that was already vacated, the site is currently under construction right now. And we're here tonight to, you can't really see it, it's in pink, to vacate the portion just to the south of that to continue the street vacation. And if I can go to the next page. This street is included in the downtown master plan as a proposed street to be vacated. These parcels that are just abutting federal highway are quite narrow. So when the city did the downtown master plan, they included this as a proposed street to be vacated in order to increase the depth, the developable depth of these lots on federal. So this is the continuation of that. On the top of this graphic, you can see the existing right-of-way layout. Both the lots to the north and the south have already had those alleys vacated. They're called, they're called alleys in the master plan, they're really substandard streets. But both the north and the south have already had it vacated and we're in here to vacate, to continue the vacation on, on this portion. And that's really all we're here for tonight, so I'm here if you have any questions.
Thanks, Andrew, sorry. Okay.
Is there any questions from the board before we open it to the public to speak?
Yeah, I have one question. On the graphic you have there, Andrew?
Yes.
The, I read in the report or maybe in, in your letter that there is a twenty-foot easement dedication. Is that what is represented here in green?
Yes, that is correct. Currently, it's a forty-foot right-of-way, the right-of-way itself is forty feet, that's not the travel lanes. There are swales on either side, no sidewalks. So we are proposing to shift the roadway and grant a twenty-foot road, right-of-way and utility easement once it's developed and the, and the streetscape is done in order to continue traffic through there.
But that easement has not been dedicated yet, it will be?
It, it will be, it should be a condition of CO for the, the project.
Is that a condition of tonight's approval?
I believe that is a condition, yes. The vacation doesn't technically take effect until, until certain conditions are met and that, yes.
Thank you.
Any other board questions? Anyone? Mary? Okay. Hearing none. Is it the wish of the board to have the staff presentation made part of the record or do you want to-
I, Jay Scheckman, move that we make the staff presentation as part of the record.
I'll second that.
Sherry McCartney seconds, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item?
Good evening, Chair, this is Tricia Logan. We do not have anyone that has signed up to speak on this item, virtually.
Thank you, Tricia, and it appears there's no one here in the chamber to speak as well. So with that, I think we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion or a vote.
I, I, Jay Scheckman, move that we approve the request because it meets the criteria of the ULDR.
I, John Baranco, will second that.
Do you want to include the conditions on page three of the staff report?
I move that we approve the request with all conditions because it meets the criteria of the ULDR.
And I, John Baranco, reconfirm my second.
Okay, let's call the roll.
Oh, is, is Mr. Gannon there now? I thought I heard you say Steve earlier.
I am here, yes.
Okay. I have you down arriving about six twelve, is that that right?
No, I was here early, before six, well before six.
Oh, but I didn't call you for the last time.
Just didn't hear, his voice was low.
Oh, but I mean, I didn't, I didn't call him to vote on the first item.
You skipped me on the first item, absolutely.
Right. Well, you can vote now.
I was a yes on that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, sorry. Okay, Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Waymoth?
Yes.
And Chair Scott?
Yes. Okay, motion-
It's unanimous.
Thank you all.
Perfect, thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to case number three, which is UDP dash S two one zero zero two. Eight-unit cluster development. Applicant is seven 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 Townhouses LLC. Do we have disclosures from the board?
No.
This is Mary Furtig and I visited the site.
I'm sorry, Mary, did you speak?
Yes, I visited the site.
Okay, thanks. Mike? Mike Waymoth, did you say something?
I have no disclosures.
Okay, thanks. Jay?
No disclosures.
John?
No disclosures.
Steve?
No disclosures.
Shari?
No disclosures.
No disclosures.
I visited the site. Okay, who is doing the presentation for the applicant? Please come forward.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
You're doing it ver-
Hi, this is Patrick, I represent the client, I'm the architect of this project at eight four three dash eight four nine southwest fourteenth Court, here known as the Cluster Development at Croissant Park. We're proposing to improve this corner site, it's right now two buildings duplex on each. We're gonna keep two, we're gonna do two new buildings with four units on each building. Here's, I'm gonna share with you guys, just indulge me for a couple of minutes, the idea for that site. These are the renderings that were proposed to build there on that corner with the typical unit and the details. The site plan complies with all the requirements of ULDR with the, all the garages facing towards each other on an interior service street. And what that does is it allows us to maximize the urban connection to southwest fourteenth and southwest ninth Avenue. This is the typical floor plan. It's two floors. A mix between four bedrooms and three-bedroom units with a occupiable roof deck. And these are, here are our sample elevations for that site. I make myself available for any questions regarding this project. We're here seeking your approval tonight.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this project? Please come forward, sir, you have three minutes. Right at the microphone, you can take your mask off if you want to speak when you get up here, so we can hear you clearly.
Hello, everybody, hello. If you're on the board, my name is Ted Insera. I live in that area, very close to where this development is, I am opposed to it. My family bought a house three-door or three houses off of ninth Avenue in nineteen fifty-three. I was born in Broward General Hospital in nineteen fifty-six. I've lived in the Croissant Park area for over fifty years. This area is a residential area, we don't need a complex of this size and magnitude in our area. It's only gonna bring more cars, more congestion. Ninth Avenue is a two-lane road with a sidewalk only on the west side of the street. Fourteenth Court or Avenue, the street where they're talking about is a two-lane road, very thin with no sidewalks on either side. On ninth Avenue, there's children riding their bicycles, there's multiple bus stops along ninth Avenue. There's, you know, mothers put carriages. It, it's just gonna add to the congestion. They built a lot of this style development along Fourth Avenue, southwest Fourth Avenue, which is fine. Fourth Avenue is a five-lane street. It has two lanes going each way and a turning lane in the middle. Ninth Avenue is a narrow two-lane road. It's already congested in the morning. We don't need to bring this development, multiple cars, multiple sewage problems. I mean, last year alone, there was two hundred and ten million gallons of sewage that were dropped in Victoria Park area along our streets, along our, the yards of the people living there and in our Venice of America canals, which is our, our main fame, you know, to the world. You know, this is what people come here for. The sewage problem is already bad enough. I mean, adding this, adding the traffic is, I, I don't, I don't see why we need this in our area. I mean, it's called a cluster, I, I don't even know what a cluster is. I've heard cluster in, there's cluster and, and something that begins with the F-word and there's cluster bombs. I mean, I think this is gonna be both of them, to tell you the truth. Now, a lot of these commissioners who are not here, Glassman, he ran on safe growth, traffic solutions and integrity of the neighborhoods. Well, this is oh-for-three on all those areas. In my opinion, it's not safe growth, it's gonna be a nightmare for traffic and it's gonna ruin the integrity of our neighborhood, which is basically residential, very quiet, single-family homes. You know, people walk their dogs, I mean, it's a nice, quiet residential area. Putting this on ninth Avenue, again, in my opinion, a two-lane road, no sidewalks, property, things are right down to the street. And then they're gonna have to close off the roads, I talked to the site manager on, on, for construction. I mean, where are the, is there a plan for where these school bus stops are gonna be moved to? Because they're all up and down ninth Avenue. And I, I just don't see this as a good idea in our Croissant Park area, which is, like I said, already stressed to the max with traffic, sewage and all the other problems. We, we don't need this, thank you.
Thank you for your time, thanks for coming. Does anybody have any questions for the gentleman?
I do.
Who's, who's I?
Steve, Steve Gannon. Isn't, isn't that the two buildings there, are they single-family residences or are they duplexes?
No, sir, they're duplexes, two units on each building. I think there's also a pool out in the northeast corner of that site.
So we're, so this, this parcel would go from four units to eight units?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
I have a question.
That's four additional units then on, go ahead.
Mary, you want to say something?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One, would ninth Avenue be closed if there were, if this were to be built?
Do you mean for construction or indefinitely?
Yeah, would ninth Avenue be closed for construction? Because that's like the major street through that portion of the neighborhood, so.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to speak about constructing techniques, but I see no reason why it would be closed.
Okay, and the second one was, did you do a public presentation to Croissant Park Civic Association or any other groups? And what was the response?
We did, actually, yeah, we sent out every, we invited everyone within three hundred square feet radius, including the associations. During their first, our first mail-out, the response was positive from the associations. During the meeting we held physically for the residents and the associations, I think about forty-five days ago, only one person showed up, also a positive response.
Okay, thank you.
You can't, but we can ask you a question. Do you belong to the association?
I actually live in-
You have to talk in the mic, please.
He's gonna have to come up.
You gotta come up to the mic.
They're recording everything.
Sorry about that.
Being recorded, that's what.
I'm a member, I actually live three houses on the west side of ninth Avenue, so I'm actually living in the River Oaks area.
Okay, so did you participate with the association?
The River Oaks?
Public meetings?
Oh, yes, yeah, every third Thursday of the month at the fifteen hundred Naz, on fifteenth Avenue at the Nazareth Church, yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
The buildings that are there now are single-story buildings.
Right.
They want to go up.
Correct.
And the amount of cars in that area is gonna increase tremendously. And I was told they were gonna have to close down ninth Avenue for a while for construction. Where else are you gonna put these dump trucks and cement trucks and these front-end loaders?
Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
Your time is up, no problem, sir, thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
For the applicant. Are you willing to, as a condition of approval, include a sidewalk along ninth Avenue?
I, I don't see why not, I can't speak for my client at this point, but we do have a sidewalk specified for that area. Right, and it's, it is in the right-of-way. So, absolute, I, I think that would not be a problem.
So, sorry, the, the proposed site plan before us tonight has a sidewalk along ninth Avenue?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking at it, I just can't tell.
And for-
There's a five-foot proposed concrete sidewalk, east side of ninth Avenue.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and did you, this is Mary again, I'm sorry, Jay, if you're not finished, I just want to know if they present it to River Oaks?
We, you mean specifically to River Oaks?
Well, if the gentleman lives three houses west, I didn't realize that was the River Oaks Association, but if it is, did you present to them? Or include them in a public meeting?
We included everyone, River Oaks also was included, they were invited to the presentation, but nobody showed up.
Is, is the dividing line between River Oaks and Croissant Park ninth Avenue? Okay, that's the confusion, okay. I was, I was, okay. Mary, you have anything else?
No, thank you.
I, I have several questions.
Please, go ahead, John.
Some of them are for staff, some of them are for the applicant. The architect, is your name Patrick?
It is, yes.
Okay, Patrick. I have a question on your calcs, on your site calcs.
Yep.
And I saw it in the report as well. It said that the site was thirty-two percent green area on the property. And visually, it doesn't appear to be, because I'm seeing a driveway, I see buildings. I see the backyard with a little pool. Walkways. And there's just not a lot of landscape area, I'm wondering how you came up with thirty-two percent.
Are you able to see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay, so all this, all this whole area here is green. All this corner, this whole back area is also green. Furthermore, the paving that we're putting here down the driveway, it's gonna be permeable paving as well. So we're well within the, the, the limits for the, for, as far as permeability.
Yeah, I don't even think there is a, a threshold. So I, I was just wondering where you came up with thirty-two percent. And I saw permeable pavers and I was wondering if, if that was how you did it, so.
No, that was, that was also to just have better drainage, right? But the, the thirty-two percent would come from the green areas.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair, we have one other person who signed up to speak on this item from the public and we also have a hand raised virtually.
Okay, we have one person in, in the chamber and we have one person virtually?
Uh, one person, two people virtually, one that signed up to speak and one with their hand raised at the moment.
Okay, bear with me, we've, John, did you finish your questions?
Jackie, let's, you can come back to me later, let's go to the-
Okay, let's go back to the public. Is there anyone in the chamber that wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward to the podium. Is it both of you or one of you? Okay, great. You, you can take your mask off to speak if you want, right, right at the podium where the microphone is.
Madam Chair, I don't believe she got sworn in, so can I go ahead and do that?
Ma'am? Before you begin speaking, we need to swear you in.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Henrietta Markwell, and I live on southwest, I live on 833 and 835 Southwest 14th Court, just one house away from the property. I've lived there since I bought the property, since 70 moved in there, built a duplex on there, but I still own. And I live on southwest, myself, I live on 609 Southwest 14th Street, for, since 80, I moved out a duplex and rented duplex out. But I've seen a lot of things going on on the street, like the gentlemen say, you hardly can walk, you have to watch it, because people leave the garbage can out, there's no thing. We had a safe home across the street from my duplex, they came there for renting there, they had 12 people in that house, and it was in chaos. Now, we have two, next to me, I have a rental home for people out of state, vacation home, and across the street, just that house went through that. So, and they don't bring the garbage in, it lays over the floor, it lays over my thing, they don't keep anything up. And there is hardly any space to live there. My little kids, I had two boys, I lived in an apartment at two houses away from where I'm, from the duplex. I rented a small apartment, and it was a big drive. My kids can play there, at least, ride their bicycles and things like that. But there is really not room, because you get raced off. I have a bicycle, and I ride bicycle with my kids, and we get raced off. And those houses shouldn't be there, like they're cluster houses, because there's way too much drainage. There was a duplex built across my street by my house. I had to build up when I had to have a retaining wall, but it's so much high. The gentleman next to me lives next door. My property is half on the water the last time, it was never happened, because next door at the house on the left, right-hand side, suppose they have a trail, and they filled it up. So, they don't have any rain and it rains, but it comes out to my side. So, that's, that's half on the water now. And also, with the duplex across the street, that is out, they had to, when I was gone, one day, when it was raining really mad, they pulled on my crests and everything else, because it was up high and across the street. It is underwater, those homes, when it rains. Now, you can't put there all those cluster homes on there, and that can be another problem. Okay? Jimmy lived there for many years, he moved out, I don't know what happened for him, he got sick or passed away, but we always talked. He wanted one time built duplexes in the middle, and was denied. Why now, and cluster homes, what don't fit in the neighborhood? I am against it. I have, I did not get any proposal in my mail about this. I called up today and find out if it was going on and what is going on. They didn't even know. They say, oh, there is a meeting. I don't know nothing about it, that's all the number was on there, and they called me up to somebody else.
We appreciate you coming, and we appreciate your input. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Madam Chair, could the speaker please spell her name? I couldn't catch it.
Ma'am, excuse me, ma'am, could you come back up and please spell your name for the re.
Thank you.
For the record, for the recording? You good?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks again, ma'am. Appreciate you coming. Tricia, you, there's no one else in the chamber that wants to speak on that item, is this correct? Okay, Tricia, you've got two people virtually?
Yes, I have Bram Skolnick, who's signed up online.
Excellent.
He's on the attendee list, if he can be moved over, unmuted.
Excellent, go ahead.
Just give him a minute to get unmuted.
No problem.
Bram, are you available to speak? I don't see that he's unmuting himself, so let's go on to the hand that's raised, it's Tracy. Can we try to unmute Tracy?
Hi.
Hi, Tracy, please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Tracy Gunn. I own a house across the street at 834 Southwest 14th Court.
Go ahead.
I have a couple of questions, like you, first of all, you mentioned that there was a mail that went to all of the residents that this was going to happen. No, that did not. I noticed a sign and found out. I'm not against progression and things, yes, I am the person that rented the house to a company that lied to me and put way too many people in my house, and it was a halfway house, but that is another story for another day. And yes, I have been short-term renting my house, because my husband, who unfortunately just passed away, and I were traveling while we were away. So, anyway, my problem, my problem is the drainage. There has been several other places built, the drainage for my property particularly, it just drains into my driveway, and it's causing a lot of problems, and I would like that sorted out. The traffic, obviously, is going to increase, I get that progression. The parking, the parking spaces that you've allocated, those are all like reverse parking spaces. Have you seen people reverse park? Like, it's kind of insane, that's, so I guess, I guess those are maybe, maybe just my questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Tricia, did you get the other person ready to?
Let's check in with him one more time. Bram, can you unmute yourself? He should be able to unmute himself if he's available, but it's not, he's not unmuting himself, so we'll have to move on.
All righty.
Should I respond to that?
Excuse me? Somebody just say.
I think he asked if you could respond. I think the applicant asked if he can respond. That's what I asked.
Yes, go ahead, applicant.
Okay, yeah, I want to respond to regarding the drainage issue, right? So, we're taking extra steps to make sure we retain within our site all of the drainage. That includes retaining wall, a deep well system, and the permeable pavers. And as far as parking, if you look at the site plan, all our parking is, again, none of it is on the street. None of it is even facing the right-of-way. It's all two-car garage away from both rights-of-way. Therefore, you can't see parking from southwest ninth or southwest 14th.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for staff. When we last reviewed a cluster development, the board made a recommendation to City Commission to make, to adjust the parking requirements for cluster town, cluster townhome developments. Can you please give us an update on where that stands and if this meets our recommended criteria?
Good evening, yes. I'm not sure if the board recalls, but we did forward a communication that was sent to the City Commission, I want to say, a few weeks back, that talked about how staff did some initial analysis on that request for the commission's directive, for the board's directive, and then the commission's directive. And we found that the code improvement, the code that we currently have, address the parking criteria sufficiently, and support a traditional neighborhood design, which emphasizes reducing the impact of front-facing garages, has a strong emphasis on walkable neighborhoods with strong front entries. And we also, that was further supported by the code revisions that we did in the Neighborhood Development Criteria Revisions Program, which was adopted a few years back. So, that communication went out again a few weeks ago.
Thanks, Ella.
Were there a specific number of spaces per unit that we recommended? I recall there being that.
Right, so what we determined is that the two parking spaces per unit plus the .25 spaces per guest parking are sufficient and are sort of equitable to the research that we've done, that showed how other communities that are of a similar context like us have similar regulations. We also reached out to Planning Advisory Services to further, you know, obtain information to kind of help support that emphasis, and we have some communications from them that, you know, kind of further supported it based on research that they did for us.
Okay, thank you. I have one more question for staff. It looks, it looks from the site plan like the sidewalks don't extend to, to the streets, the horizontal streets, and it's, is there a reason that, I mean, there are multiple developments I've seen in the city that the sidewalks don't actually extend to the street? Eon, for example? Like, why does, why don't the sidewalks on these projects actually, why aren't they actually accessible by the street?
You mean why, why there's such a large buffer between the street and the sidewalk itself?
No, just accessibility.
In terms of the connection down to the street?
Right.
Yeah, no, they're typically designed that way. I'm not sure if we're seeing the details of that on this plan, and maybe Tyler, you can expand on it.
I mean, even in the rendering, it showed that it doesn't connect to the street, if you want to go to the rendering. See?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, that's not accurate.
Could we maybe get the applicant to clarify? This would have been an engineering design that would have been vetted prior to engineering sign-off on the plan, so I would like to hear from the applicant as far as the sidewalk design.
The, well, it's very simple. We're not opposed to connecting to the street, there is just nothing to connect to. If we look on the other side of the street, I mean, there's nothing that we can connect to there. So, we're, I mean, we can certainly connect to the, increase that curb cut to the street, and we're not opposed to that on either side, actually. We're just, we're just confused as to what would be connecting to. Like, what would be, would the intention be to cross the street and go to the other side, or just walk in the middle of the road?
I, yeah, I can answer that. I, in my, in my eyes, the intention would be to build each property in such a way that eventually they can all connect and create a sensible system. So, if we, you know, Ninth Avenue is one of the busiest cut-through streets in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and so I think it would make sense for there to be
Yeah.
And a whole system of sidewalks built along it.
Sure, absolutely, and we're not opposed to that. I think that's why it didn't come up in engineering, is because it's a single-family home on the other side, but we can certainly move forward if that's a condition.
Ella, can I ask you a question? In this package here, I'm looking at the Civil Plan C2 of 4, which is obviously a civil drawing, and it very clearly calls for a proposed five-foot concrete sidewalk. Isn't all of this approved at DRC before it ever gets to us? So, on this civil plan, it's calling for a five-foot concrete sidewalk along the eastern edge of Ninth Avenue. So, I'm assuming that's because it's on there, it will need to be constructed in court, in conjunction with this project.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
But not necessarily extending to the streets? Ella?
I'm not sure if you can go on to somebody else's property and extend this, well, I guess this isn't on the sidewalk, so, I mean, it's not on the adjacent private, I see what you're saying.
I mean, I worry about ADA accessibility.
You're talking about the corner.
Yeah.
Just flare in the corner so that you can cross eventually.
Or that, so somebody in a wheelchair could access the sidewalk.
Get across 14th Court. Yeah.
Yeah.
I would do that.
And then, I guess, with respect to parking, I hear you, Ella, on how this meets the criteria. I guess, when we're considering like a cluster development versus, like, if this were three separate, you know, let's say they subdivided this into three lots and had duplex on each, and it was six units, or let's say they did it with, you know, they subdivided into four and did eight units. Each of those would have its own driveway, so you'd have a two-car garage with driveways, which would be able to accommodate more guests. If one person here decides that they want to host friends for a football game, one person, you know, and then where are those cars going? They're not going on Ninth Avenue, you know?
This, with all respect, this is the long discussion that we had probably six months ago.
Yeah.
It was taken back to the commission and staff, and they decided not to change it. So, I don't want to, I mean, that's just the reality of where we're at with particular zoning.
I will just add that, you know, this is a higher-level review. It's in front of the Planning and Zoning Board for that reason. So, these discussions about additional criteria, the adequacy compatibility, you all have the ability and opportunity to comment on that. All we said was that, in respect to the parking, you know, any, any additional parking really would create, or it's not really common for the type of traditional neighborhood areas that we have here in the city, in close urban context, there are more sort of solutions that are suburban, and we don't have that much land, as we all know, but certainly you can use the entire criteria for the cluster development, which is a higher-level review, and that is why it's in front of the board.
Exactly, that's what I was reminding the board. Thank you.
Have we closed the public hearing? I'm sorry to have to ask, I just am.
No, we actually didn't. Would you like me to close the public hearing?
If there are no further speakers, so that we can discuss, we can still talk to the applicant, but I didn't want to be offering any opinions if we still had people from the public who wanted to speak.
... terrorists and everyone looking into my yard. Also, like I said, there's, the drainage is a problem, there's no parking anywhere, there's absolutely no sidewalks to walk on, on Southwest 14th Court, neither on Southwest Ninth Ave, only on one side. So, I feel like this is going to be a huge problem, it's going to cause a lot of traffic, and I'm just against it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. A motion to close the public hearing? Yes, motion, okay. We're now going to close the public hearing and bring this back only for the board. John Baranco, you have some questions, you have some comments?
In hearing the public, you know, a lot of the concerns are things that are actually being addressed here, so I heard, you know, we have no sidewalks, these guys are building sidewalks, drainage is terrible, these guys are improving the drainage and containing the drainage, so those sorts of things are actual.
The, the capacity will be able to handle it, uh, once they upsize the gravity main. That's one of the conditions.
Correct. And I saw that, which is great.
Yeah.
I'm glad that's happening. But I'm asking this question of staff, what is the condition of the lines in that area?
So Chair, I don't see, um, so your exhibit three, um, first of all, is the water and wastewater capacity availability letter. Um, I don't see, actually, there's a description on page three of that exhibit, um, that says, description of existing utilities, the site is currently served by an eight-inch water main.
I, I don't think, Ella, you're gonna find anything on condition.
Yeah, I don't think it talks about the condition. Yeah.
But, you know, we go through this with every project. This isn't a gigantic project. However, people want to know what the condition of the pipes are, so to speak. So, that's why I'm asking the question.
Although, the summary, Chair, does say that approximately thirty linear feet of the sixteen-inch diameter gravity sewer shall be up-sized to twenty-four inch in diameter. So that's, that's technically a new pipe.
Right. But that's really to do with capacity, I think. Okay.
Yes.
Alrighty. Um, any other comments? The public hearing is closed. Any other comments from the board?
I have my hand up, Jackie. I don't know that you can see.
I'm sorry, Mary. Go ahead.
Okay. I just have a couple things, just, uh, tagging on with some of what you said about the garbage and what John said. I'm just concerned that, that we have four units and we're going to eight. It seems like a lot. I, I, I've looked over and over. I'm just sitting here staring, trying to find that thirty-two percent, um, green space that John brought up. And Ninth Avenue is a busy, busy street. And I, I, and this, and this is gonna be coming, parking, coming out on Ninth Avenue. I, I just have some concerns about that. So, um, I don't know whether they have the mailers that they sent to the neighborhood, but I, I'm also troubled that more than one neighbor has come forward not having gotten the public, um, mailing and had the participation meeting, so that hopefully they could have addressed some of these issues before we got here tonight. So, um, those are my concerns. And thank you for giving me that opportunity.
Any other comments from the board? I, um, I'm concerned about voting on this as it relates to, uh, all the comments that, that John Bronco made and Jay made in reference to sidewalks, parking, et cetera.
So why don't we give them a chance to go back and address some of these items and we'll table this to a further, to a later time.
Would you like to make that motion, Mr. Weymouth?
You should ask.
Can I, um, can I interject?
Yeah, you should ask the applicant if he'd be interested in something.
Yeah, would you like to defer this?
Well, I would like your conditional approval based on those things. We would agree to do, you know, whatever you want us to do regarding the sidewalks and, um, and maybe some, uh, landscape around the trash. Based on your conditional approval, it just seems like, um, honestly, we've checked every box that's in the code. Right? Uh, the street size is per code, therefore, a car should be able to back in and out. It's this, there's a reason these engineers come up with these numbers. It's not, um, it's not really random. Right? Um, so I think all the issues to the community is addressed. Certainly, we can, uh, we can do the sidewalks, connect them, but I don't see a reason to defer, especially not with these two issues, especially just the greenscape around the trash and connecting the sidewalk to the street with all newers free.
Okay. Does anyone, so they don't want to defer and come back with the changes that we may propose? Um, how do you want to handle this, board?
Call the vote.
Patrick, are you sure you don't want to defer?
Well, what is, um...
Motion here, and I haven't heard a motion with conditions. And I, I'm just, I know you're not reading the crowd right now, because you're not in here.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know, man. I, I think it is a lot. And, you know, safety is one of those things that the code doesn't check every box, right? So there are things that are inherently wrong here. And, you know, the one scenario of somebody driving in here and having to back out onto Ninth Ave. Ninth Ave is, you know, as much as everybody wants to call it a residential street, it's pretty busy. And I have friends who live over there, and I'm in that neighborhood all the time, and I, I just don't see it as a safe condition. I, I'm, yeah. So if you want to defer, I, I think that's your best option. But if you wanted to go to vote, we'll take it to vote and see what happens.
Okay, is there a motion?
All right, let's, um, let's defer then, guys.
I'd like to make a motion to defer, uh, to a future date, um, for the applicant to make the revisions and work with staff addressing the concerns of the board.
We have to have a date certain, so what date would you like?
We should need the, the concerns. They should be all on record instead of having to make you go back through all that.
Yeah?
Would you be ready for, now, we need at least two months, because staff needs to work with you. I'm gonna defer it.
November seventeenth?
November seventeenth. Thank you.
And could we, um, ask amongst the other things that we mentioned tonight, that there be one more meeting with the neighbors in an attempt to resolve some of the issues?
Just to, um, just to, is this Mary, Mary, just to...
Yeah, it's Mary.
Just to touch on that issue, the gentleman that spoke, Luis, he was one of the people that did receive the letter, because he emailed me right next, you know, a few days later. He didn't, wasn't able, so the letters were out. I don't know why, you know, some neighbors didn't receive them. I couldn't speak to USPS, but we did mail them out within the allotted time.
And, and I'm not, and I, I'm sure you did. I'm not questioning that. I just think it's an opportunity to try to get with neighbors and see if you can resolve some of the issues. They may come up with something else that you could resolve before you come back. I just think it's a good, a good move, but it's up to you. But I would like that as a condition, that there be one more meeting, in addition to all the thing, other things that were brought up.
All right. Can we get a sooner meeting than two months, guys?
No.
No.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to defer made by Mr. Bronco. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Bill Rattella seconded the motion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Do we need to call the roll, Shari?
You just have to make sure you call if all opposed and if there's an abstention.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion to defer passes. Okay, on to our last case tonight. Case number PL dash R17037. Florida Power and Light. Um, start with the disclosures, Mr. Bronco.
I've visited the site and spoke to one of the neighbors.
Okay. Jay?
I'm a client of FPL. I, I pay them utilities every month.
Mike?
I spoke to the applicant's attorney.
No disclosures.
Shari?
I spoke to the attorney for the applicant.
I also spoke with the attorney's applicant.
You're out of turn.
Sorry.
Bill?
No disclosures.
No disclosures. And I, uh, visited the site and spoke to one of the FPNL attorneys.
Oh, Jackie?
Yes, sir.
May I disclose one more thing? I did speak to the applicant's attorney.
Sure. Okay, John, thank you.
Don't forget Mary.
Disclosure.
I, I, uh, visited the site and spoke with Hope Calhoun.
Perfect. Thanks, Mary. Okay, would the applicant like to start, maybe?
Good evening. My name is Matthew Scott. I'm a, an attorney at the law firm, the name is Gordon Bachman, with an address of fourteen Southeast Fourth Street in Boca Raton. Hope Calhoun is my partner, and I've been working on this project with her. Um, we're here on behalf of FPL and FiberNet. Let's see if I can click through here. This is a conditional use application, um, to allow for an already existing electrical substation with an existing telecommunications, telecommunications tower. So it's kind of a unique app, application, uh, because typically, as you know, we come to the planning and zoning board before something is constructed. Uh, but in this case, uh, this has been a long-existing FPL substation, and the, um, pole on-site was permitted and constructed in compliance with permits. During the permitting process, um, it was discovered that there needed to be a conditional use application and process that we had to go through. So we kind of went back, um, and have gone through that process. It's been a number of years that we've been working with the community, uh, the neighbors, trying to address their concerns. Uh, the feedback we've gotten from some of the work we've done on-site with landscaping is, is, has been pretty positive. Um, but just to give some more background, this is in, uh, the, the substation is located in the Riverland neighborhood. Uh, the address is seventeen-fifty Southwest Thirty-First Avenue. Um, the land use and zoning are both utilities, right? So this is a property that is, um, intended to be the location for utilities. Um, and what we're talking about tonight, what we're, what we're considering and presenting for approval is a lightning shield pole that was installed back in two thousand fourteen. In two thousand fifteen, permits were issued to put wireless attachments. So what happens is where there's utility location, just for background, such as an FPL site, and there'll be a pole, a lightning shield to protect the substation, um, from lightning. Frequently, uh, other utility providers, like cell providers, will want to put on that pole, um, cellular facilities to improve cellular service. And so that's how we got here with this site. As I said, this is a conditional use application, um, but it's kind of odd, because it's an already existing site, and so we're seeking for the conditional use approval after it's already been constructed. But there are various criteria that, that we have to go through and discuss. Um, as you saw in your staff report, I believe staff is recommending approval, or, or did say that we are complying with the criteria. Um, but just to go through, uh, sort of the, the key conditional use criteria for your review, um, this is, this is an unmanned station. So a lot of the typical impacts we might be concerned about with conditional uses aren't present here, meaning there aren't going to be loud noises, there aren't going to be lots of employees coming, there aren't going to be odor, um, or light emanating from the facility. So we believe that we address a lot of those, uh, conditional, uh, typical concerns with a conditional use as far as impacts on neighbors. I would add as well that, uh, this project is beneficial to the neighborhood, first and foremost, because cell service is, has drastically improved. So, so the way that a utility provider, um, such as Verizon, or AT&amp;T, or T-Mobile decides to add a cellular facility to an existing pole, is they identify the cell service in that area is not so great. So in this case, uh, T-Mobile was receiving calls, information, conducted a study that indicated the service in this area was poor. And since the installation of this facility, the, um, cell service in this area has drastically improved. The other benefit of, um, that we're proposing with this project is the installation of, um, lots of landscaping around the facility and in an effort to shield the view of it, uh, from the neighbors. So there's an, a potocarpus hedge going around the entire site on the outside of the fence. And then there's also a number of silver buttonwood trees that are, that have already been installed around it to further shield the substation at the ground level. Um, I'm happy to go through all the criteria with you, uh, but some of them just obviously don't apply. For example, ac, access, traffic, circulation, things of that nature, because it's an unmanned station, there's just not a genuine issue with this facility causing an issue in that regard. Um, as I stated at the beginning, um, the property has a land use designation of utilities. So clearly, utilities being on this site are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Some of the conditional use criteria get a little duplicative. For example, onsite improvements have been incorporated into the site plan, which minimize any adverse impacts. Talked about these some. There's a fence around the site already existing. And then in the past six months or so, there's been extensive landscaping installed to minimize the negative view of, of a utility station in the middle of the Riverland neighborhood. Um, here is just an aerial to give you an idea of where the site is. As I said, it's in the, the Riverland neighborhood. And again, we're just going over, ensuring with this conditional use review that there will be no negative impacts. I think it's important that I note when, uh, when we're talking about this existing site and sort of the issues and the odd history with this one here, that my client and, um, my colleague, we have met with the neighborhood multiple times over the years. Uh, this has been going on since back in two thousand fifteen. And so we've had many meetings with them. We've met with, uh, the neighbors and asked what we might be able to do to address their concerns. The key concerns were with landscaping. Um, another thing that we proposed was making the existing pole look like a tree. Uh, that's something that you see around the community. That was something that the community asked us not to do, because they felt like it didn't improve the appearance of, of the pole in any way. And so here is an image of the existing pole. And as a, um, as part of the application, FPL has, um, indicated in, in the application documents that no additional facilities will be added to the pole, which is my understanding in our meetings with the neighbors, that was a really important thing to them, meaning it won't get any bigger or any wider. And here again, beating a dead bush, pun intended here, are pointing out the landscaping that, that we've installed in the area. Here's just another image. Which, uh, and then this is after with the, with the landscaping that, that we're installing. Um, let me see if I have any notes of anything else I wanted to add. Yes, a key item with the utility facilities is setbacks. Typically, uh, the setback is required to be double the so, height of the pole. In this case, that would mean approximately a two-hundred-foot setback on all sides. It's important that I note, prior to coming to the planning and zoning board tonight, a few years ago, we did obtain variances for the setbacks on the east and south sides. Uh, the Board of Adjustment did grant those variances. So that, those two setbacks are addressed. With regard to the other setbacks, we do comply with code and we exceed what is required. Um, I believe that is all I have for my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Do we have questions, or do we want to open this to the public?
I, I move that we make the staff report part of the records tonight.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Hi, John Bronco, second. Jay Scheckman's motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Um, is there any, is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on this issue? Is there anyone virtually that would like to speak on this issue, Tricia, from the public?
Evening, Chair. Uh, we do not have anyone that signed up to speak on the site.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion. Um, I have a question, if I could start. Do you work for FiberNet or FPNL?
So FiberNet did the contracting work, and we are hired by both, FPL and FiberNet as their attorneys.
You mean FiberNet did the landscape?
FiberNet was responsible for the landscaping, yes.
I'd like to see what it looked like before.
Sure.
Before you did the landscape. You know, I went, I went to another station earlier today, and the landscape around it was beautiful. When I got here, I realized this was a new, this was new landscape. I, I presume the neighborhood convinced you to landscape it, is that right?
Yes, that's, that's a fair statement, that as part of the conversations, we've been going back and forth with them for years. And so, I guess in the summertime this year, the, the landscaping was installed. And the feedback we've gotten from the neighbors has been very positive.
Oh, yeah, it looks nice. So who installed it, FPNL or FiberNet?
Well, it's an FPL-owned property that FiberNet's doing work for. So it's a bit six in one, half a dozen in the other. But FiberNet's handling this for FPNL, I should say.
Okay. It does look much better than I'm sure it looked at in the past. Okay, anybody, other board members have any comments or questions for the applicant?
I just have a comment. I dropped off a buddy of mine who lives on this street over the weekend, and he made me drive by here, just so he could brag at how nice FPNL did with their landscape. And I was like, oh, wow, they finally, because he always had an issue with FPNL there, and it's so ugly and this and that, but he drove me by. He's like, look at that, you can't even see it. He was very excited about, so.
I wish we didn't have those substations in neighborhoods.
Well, you need them.
Yeah, I know, but it'd be nice if they were landscaped and closed down.
I, I want to echo the landscaping, though. It really looks great, and I think it's wonderful that FPNL did that.
Great. Okay, any other discussion?
We, uh, in Tarpon River, we have a substation that was just totally exposed and many years ago, like, I think it was like, I'm just guessing, twenty years ago, they actually, you know, met a request to build walls around it, and they put a monument that said Tarpon River. And I never even knew it was a substation until somebody wrote...
That's the way all, they all should be.
Yeah.
Amen. Okay, any other comments from the board, or want to make a motion, anyone? Okay, do you want to defer? No, it's a joke.
I move, I move we approve.
Okay, Jay Scheckman moves we approve. Is there a second? Who's the second? Shari? Shari McCartney seconds.
Can I read the resolution?
Pardon me?
Can I please read the resolution?
Please do.
Um, just a question. Do you adopt the findings of fact in the staff report for the person that made the motion?
John, you made the motion?
Yes, I find that it meets the staff, uh, all the conditions, and it meets the criteria.
Mm-hmm, yeah. A resolution of the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida approving a conditional use permit after the fact for an existing one-hundred-and-foot unit pole tower for the property located at seventeen-fifty Southwest Thirty-First Avenue of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the Utilities Zoning District, case number PLR seventeen zero thirty-seven.
Okay, can we call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Fertig?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Rattella?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Weymouth?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Chair Scott?
Yes.
Janice?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda, is there any communication to the city commission?
Yeah, I want to bring something to the board's attention. Um, one of our nicest and most coveted parks in the city of Fort Lauderdale is Hardy Park, um, just south of Publix. And i, in, um, unlike other parks such as Holiday Park, which are zoned as park, Hardy Park is zoned as Rack CC. Um, and it's a park. So I would recommend that we have Hardy Park rezoned to park from Rack CC.
So you want to communicate to the city commission?
Yeah. Uh, I, so I would move and send a communication to the city commission to have Hardy Park rezoned from Rack CC to park.
And this is Mary, and I'm seconding it.
Why would you only limit it to Hardy Park?
That's the only, um, park that...
Hazinga, Esplanade, um, the one right up here on Andrews, there's four or five of them in the rack.
Are they, so there are parks like, that are in the rack that are also zoned park? Um, this one just happens to not be. I'm not sure about those other ones.
So do you want to review?
So do you want to make it any park in the rack that's not, that's not zoned park?
Ella, can you speak to this?
Yeah.
As far as why parks are not zoned parks?
Um, I, I don't actually have history on why they're zoned Regional Activity Center. Um, in some instances, um, we've gone through a similar effort and actually rezoned parks to park space. So obviously, there's limitations on uses that, once it's rezoned to parks, it's, it's just that use. Um, so certainly, if that's the communication the board wants to pass forward, we, we can. But I, I don't have too much history on why that park is zoned Rack CC. We, we'd have to do a little bit of research on that.
Ella, when you say there's limitations, so they have the existing, that's the Southside School, right, that was renovated, and they have programs in there. That wouldn't be limited, would it?
Yeah, no, there's, there's definitely accessory uses to a park that are permitted as part of a park use. Yeah, that's not a problem.
Yeah, so I am looking at the zoning map, and, you know, some are zoned parks and some aren't. You know, like, uh, Esplanade Park is zoned park, Hazinga Park is Rack CC. Um, so I would, I think, what were the other two you wanted to include, Michael? I wouldn't be opposed to that.
I think we need a motion that's more inclusive.
I'm not wanting to include any of them. I'm just saying there's other parks in the rack.
Okay, so I move that we, um, rezone any existing parks within the downtown Regional Activity Center, future land use designation, um, to park if they're not already.
And I would second that, Jay. That's great that you picked that up.
You wanting to say something, Dwayne?
Um, yes, you, you, you made an inquiry as to the reason why the, uh, parcels were not zoned park. I don't know if this is a, the reason why, but there is a provision within the Charter, uh, section eight point two one, dealing with the disposal of public property, that says, notwithstanding anything to the contrary, in this charter, the city shall not sell, transfer, or lease for more than one year any land zoned park in accordance with the city's Unified Land Development Regulations without a unanimous vote of the entire commission. Additionally, any land zoned park on November tenth twenty, uh, no, two thousand and four shall be, shall require unanimous vote of the entire city commission to remove such a designation.
Thank you. I, I think this would be a fantastic way for our, us to protect our parks.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I guess I would want some clarification as to why it isn't already zoned a park. Maybe there's some rationale for it that, that we're not aware. So I'd want to know that before we, uh, made that recommendation.
Can, can we send the recommendation or the question to the city commission to have staff look at that and bring it back to us, Jay?
Because that's really the only way we can get the staff to do it, is my understanding from our previous conversations, is to send it to the commission.
Yes.
To agree, to agree on what?
Well, the Planning and Zoning Board would like to look at parks that are in the rack, uh, to be able to be, uh, zoned just as parks or designated as parks. That's what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, I...
And to have staff do that research for us, so that we know the rationale.
I mean, if...
Don't we have to ask for that? I mean, don't we have to ask for, uh, permission to have the staff actually do the research for us?
I, yeah, we have to suggest that the Planning and Zoning Board agrees they'd like to look at all parks in the Regional Activity Center that are parks, but they're not designated parks. Is that correct?
I think that they should just, I, I don't think that we need to complicate it. I think that these are parks, and they should just be zoned as parks. And if, if there is, if the lease in the future, you know, that needs to be done on the park, then, just as you said, Duane Spence, it should be by unanimous consent of the commission. Um, so, but there should be certain protections in place to provide them from just turning into something else.
Madam Chair, my, my concern was only that I wasn't in a position to support it if I don't understand the rationale for why they aren't already zoned parks. And, and maybe there is a reason, and maybe it's a plausible reason, but I don't know what that is.
Okay.
That's what I'd like to find out.
And Madam Chair, if I could, staff can certainly, um, evaluate the parks. Like, for example, there's the DDA Park, and I know that there's some nuances behind, you know, what can be done on that site. So perhaps, as part of your communication, as was earlier suggested, it's, it sort of could be twofold. Examine the parks, and then, you know, based on that analysis, the commission could do a further analysis of whether to rezone any of them.
Okay, so I believe that's what we're asking.
So, Shari, I think the answer to your question is, is that when they created the rack zoning, the Regional Activity Center, they identified a region. And it's easier to identify the borders than the pieces that lay within there. So I think that's the reason why the whole area is, is zoned that way.
Yet some are identified as, as parks and some are not.
In the rack? It may be, uh, I don't know. I have not looked at the rack, I have looked at the rack many a times. I've not looked at the rack for that purpose. I, I don't remember.
Well, to expedite this, it seems like if we pass the motion all-encompassing, then otherwise, it's going to come back to us. We're going to have to send it back. So if we ask the permission to have staff study it and then move it forward, I think it'll be more timely than if we just piecemeal it.
Does, does a park designation allow for accessory uses? Is it very clear?
Yes, it does allow for, um, park facilities and accessory uses.
I'm looking at Rack CC, and there's only one designated park within Rack CC all the way to the north. I think, if I'm not mistaken, that's Lee Feldman, or not Lee, that's Feldman Park.
That may not be in the rack, too.
It's within...
Is it in the rack?
It's carved out of Rack CC. Yeah, it's the only one.
Okay, Jay, you want to restate your motion and see if...
Okay. Okay, I move that we ask, I move that we send a communication to the city commission to ask staff to review existing parks within the downtown Regional Activity Center, which are not currently designated as parks, to determine why they are not and if they should be.
Then I'll second that, Jackie.
Okay. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Okay, thanks. We'll communicate that.
Thank you. And Ella, maybe if one of us can't be there, you can point to their attention, some specific parks like Hardy Park, which are not designated as parks.
So the commission has requested that one of the members or the member that makes the motion be present to address questions.
Okay, I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Got it, Jay.
If you're not there, it fails.
One, one more thing before, I've got something I want to bring up, but I-
Me too.
Item five on the agenda, this big package. If you didn't bring it with you and it's still at home, keep it. But let's not have them have to reprint that whole-
That I agree with.
Item number five, okay? Okay, I have, I have a question for the city attorney. Yesterday, there was a big meeting at, big meeting here on that one-stop shop. And there were members there speaking if they were in favor, against it, why, whatever. And I know we had two people from the Planning and Zoning Board that gave their opinion. And then we had somebody else come up and say that they wanted to know why members of the Planning and Zoning Board could come up and publicly give an opinion or be for or against something, when in fact, that may come before the Planning and Zoning Board, which it probably would. So in order to protect the integrity of the board and make sure everybody's, everybody's protected on how they conduct themselves, I'd like to get an opinion on if what we should do is, is Planning and Zoning Board members.
Can I make a comment on that? The question was what, whether, was not on a site plan or a building or anything. It was simply on the concept of whether we support a park. One of us spoke in person, one of us spoke virtually. We would have had no way, because there's no published list of the speakers, of knowing that anybody else was doing it. And were you at that meeting, Jackie?
I was.
So that would be a third member of Planning and Zoning that was there. Think if it, if, to me, if, if it had been a site plan that was going to come before us, I would not have shown up to give an opinion on it. If it was a, if it was a specific request to change zoning or something, but that's not what the issue was. It was on, on whether the future of it should be open space or the buildings. It wasn't whether we liked the buildings. It wasn't whether it could be another building or anything else. So I, I think that if, you know, I would have a fear that if we start putting restrictions on our ability to speak in public, we're going to find ourselves unable ever to speak about anything. And, and I don't think that's appropriate.
I, yeah, you're taking this to a level that I'm not even thinking about. I'm thinking in more in terms of the integrity of the board and making sure that they tell us whether or not we should speak on these items if they're going to be coming before us.
Yeah, and, and by the way, there was-
Somebody made that comment and, you know, I don't want, I don't want to do anything wrong. I know you don't want to do anything wrong. Nobody wants to do anything wrong. So let's just get it clarified so that we're all comfortable with our conduct, conduct at these special meetings when in fact, the item may come before us as a board. That's the only intent of that comment. I think it's time to get that straightened out.
Okay. Now, Dewayne Spence, Assistant City Attorney. Based on the comment at the city commission meeting, the city attorney has been asked to weigh in on the matter and will be drafting a memorandum to provide some guidance on it. At this moment though, I would take the opportunity to just kind of refresh the board's memory or refresh the board as to your role when it comes to quasi judicial matters. You sit as the fact finders in these matters, similar to a jury or a panel of judges, more akin to a panel of judges in that you're appointed to this board because of specific expertise, expertise that you bring to the matter. But what occurs in these quasi judicial hearings is the applicant brings a application and they're, and they provide evidence and testimony to prove to you that they meet the criteria of the code. And your function as the Planning and Zoning Board is to hear the testimony and review it in comparison to the code to see if they meet their burden of proof of showing competent substantial evidence that they've met the criteria of the code. Anything that brings an appearance that you have come to the table with a pre, an already judged opinion on the project, brings into question the due process within that hearing and, and, and makes it an issue that is challengeable when you insert, when it goes to court and makes our jobs a little bit difficult in upholding your decision. So anything that is said outside of the form, which is the reason why we have the disclosures and so forth prior to every item, will, will bring the decision of the board under challenge and may overturn many of the board's decisions based on any comments on a particular project that may be viewed as a board member already having a preconceived idea or notion of how they're willing to vote on the matter versus an unbiased, unfiltered review of the evidence presented at the hearing and its comparison to the code.
So can I comment on that opinion? Because if we can't hear and we can't express our opinions in a, in a city conference meeting, knowing that the comprehensive agreement, which will be the controlling document and which my comments were specifically addressed to, if we can't do that, how can you explain that the commission can do that? Sit through a similar quasi judicial hearing and they are allowed to do it and we're not? And they're not challengeable and we are.
I, I don't understand how the question relates to my guidance with regards to the board's role as fact finders. I wasn't speaking directly to any of this specific action. As I stated, the city attorney will be addressing in a memorandum directly that issue. I've just provided a reminder of the role of a fact finder and what that entails.
Did you say, Dewayne, that the commission already discussed this?
No, I didn't.
Oh, I thought you said that there was some direction with Allen to, to, okay, maybe I'm missing-
Was the question, was the question asked during the hearing?
Was the question asked?
During the hearing.
What question? But I'm confused.
Whether, whether it was appropriate for two members of Planning and Zoning to address a public issue before the commission.
Mary, a lady-
What?
A lady got up and made a public comment to the city commission stating specifically, how could two members of the Planning and Zoning Board come up and speak on this item when in fact, they're probably going to be, have to be voting on it? That was the exact, close to being the exact comment. And then I started thinking, okay, if someone's making a comment like that, we need to vet this and figure out what our role should be in those meetings. So we're not, you know, so we're doing things correctly and not jeopardizing the city or, you know, our role.
I can think of multiple issues where more than one member of Planning and Zoning has stood up and, and commented on an issue. I think it should be a question of whether it's a particular case in front of us and we have no case in front of us.
I, my, my feeling wasn't that it really didn't have to do, there could have been four members of Planning and Zoning. The point is, are we supposed to, as members of the Planning and Zoning Board for this city, supposed to get up and publicly give our opinion before or against a project that in fact is going to be possibly coming before us? That's my only issue. We could have all showed them.
And I, and Jackie, I agree with that issue. But this is not, this was not a project that will be coming before us.
Okay.
Conversation dealt a lot with a comprehensive agreement and that is not, gee, did we get to vote on that? I don't think so. So I, I think that we have to be real careful that we don't say there's nothing, nothing that we can, you know, you could widen that to a point where we would be unable to speak on anything. And, and again, the commission has heard testimony on all of this, they will hear testimony again, they have offered their opinions. And you could make that same argument that any one of them that's voted yes or no on something, they could have that same prejudice when they go to vote on the, on the site plan if that, if that rationale is valid. So I, I just would hope that we would be cautious in not doing something that's going to prevent people from speaking on matters in general that have absolutely nothing to do with a case in front of us.
Well, I, I agree with you on that. I just want to get this clarified so that we're operating and conducting ourselves appropriately. Totally. There's a member in the audience that wants to speak, but I don't know if we can really...
You can.
Okay, so you're going to look into that or, you know, if it's no big deal and we don't have to worry, we'll just continue to, you know, participate and-
No, I, I think the board will, the board and the city commission will be getting clear guidance from the city attorney on this matter.
Okay.
I, I don't know what the confusion is with regards to the finding of fact. I think that is clear that there shouldn't be any telegraphing of anything that should prejudice your role here. I, I didn't insinuate that to any particular matter. I, I think that's pretty clear cut and I hope that's understood by all the board members with regards to quasi judicial matters.
Thank you. I think we just want to operate correctly. So, any further business with this board this evening? Meeting adjourned.